The meeting of the Anderson County, the June 16th Anderson County Board of Commissioners meeting started. This is the, this is the resolution proclamation, a presentation portion of the meeting, and we will start out this evening with a proclamation in honor of the Appalachian storyteller JD, I'm sorry JD Phillips requested by Commissioner Allen.
Thank you for being here. I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas local author and historian JD Phillips was born in a poverty in cotton fields of Mississippi Delta before moving to East Tennessee. And whereas JD Phillips grew up having regular conversation with his elders, all of whom were master storytellers, from them he learned the tales of family history and ancestors as well as the local area. So it was only natural that JD Phillips himself would grow up with an inclination to, as he said, question things. I've always been a person who, if anybody told me something, no matter what it was, I would ask why. Whereas JD Phillips graduated high school and went on to earn bachelor's, master's, and doctorate degrees in music education at Boston University, one of the top music schools in the world, JD Phillips taught music to students from Mississippi for three years after college, followed by eight years at public schools in Shelby County, Tennessee, and 10 years in the East Tennessee at Jefferson Middle School and Oak Ridge High School, where he led the school orchestra to 19 national championships and was honored by Tennessee Governor Bill Haslam when he was named one of the top music teachers in America by the Country Music Association in 2018. And whereas an award-winning multi-instrumentalist who plays anything with strings plus the piano and drums, JD Phillips started a YouTube channel in 2007 that is known as the Appalachian Storyteller on both YouTube and Facebook. His brand has more than a half million followers combined with over 50 million views from around the world. And whereas JD Phillips now spends his career pouring his talents into visually and musically conveying the stories of the people and places of Southern Appalachia through the media of television and the internet to people all over the world. Each episode on his YouTube channel takes between 40 and 50 hours to research, film, and edit. He has written four books and has a fifth one that will be published in September 2025. Now therefore, we as members of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners and County Mayor Terry Frank do hereby proclaim Friday, June 20th of 2025 as the Appalachian Storyteller Day in Anderson County. And so doing, we acknowledge and love and dedication to history that Dr. JD Phillips and the Appalachian storyteller have for the people and places of Southern Appalachia. And our hope is that the stories he shares have a lasting impact for generations to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much for this honor. I'm very humbled by it. I still live in Oak Ridge and my son still attends Oak Ridge Schools. It's ironic that when I first started telling these stories, I first started telling local stories and I probably have written maybe 30 or 40 stories on the history of Anderson County, Clinton, Oak Ridge, Oliver Springs, and several of those stories are in my books. I never wrote any of those for any recognition or never would have thought that this would happen, but I'm very honored by it. And the channel, as he said, is all over the world. I've contacted from people in nearly every country that has access to the internet, free internet. And a fifth book coming out in September. I've written a children's book as a nod to my education. And again, just thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Boach, I don't think he's related to us. I am.
Oh, no, maybe my side.
Maybe somewhere down there.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Hope you guys have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. We appreciate you coming in and we appreciate you sharing your stories with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to our second presentation, a resolution honoring Ms. Nicole Brooks requested by Law Director Director Brooks.
dedicated service to Anderson County. Whereas Nicole Brooks has faithfully served the citizens and government officials of Anderson County since August of 2003. Whereas Ms. Brooks initially was initially hired by Sheriff Bill White and served as a civil process server, assisted in SWAT training, and performed undercover work with the Anderson County Sheriff's Office Drug Unit before becoming a probation officer and later worked as a pre-trial release officer. Whereas Ms. Brooks joined the staff of the Anderson County Law Director's Office in 2010 where she became chief deputy working with two law directors and mentoring a staff during her tenure. And she has been essential to the law director's office during the recent transition to the new law director following the untimely death of Director Jaeger. Whereas beyond her primary duties, Ms. Brooks has contributed to several important projects and committees, including serving as a project manager for the General Sessions II renovation and relocation, membership on the Employees Benefit Committee, board member and treasurer for the Anderson County Sheriff's Department Cadet Program, Secretary of the Justice Center Committee, and a dedicated participant with the leading ladies of Anderson County among other volunteer activities and contributions. Whereas Ms. Brooks' commitment and service have made her a true asset to the citizens of Anderson County and exemplify dedication, professionalism, and community service. Whereas Ms. Brooks is truly dedicated to her office family as well as her immediate family, showing tireless devotion to her husband Allen, daughters Lindsay and McKinley, Amber and Autumn, sons Kayden and Zach, and granddaughters Macy, Brooklyn, Oakley, and Josie, and has skillfully balanced her role as a loving mother, wife, and civil servant. And whereas Ms. Brooks has announced that she will be leaving the Anderson County Law Director's Office effective July 7, 2025, now therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners meeting the 16th day of June 2025, that we honor and express our deepest gratitude to Nicole Brooks for her decades of devoted service and leadership to the numerous, and her numerous contributions to Anderson County. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered in the minutes of this board and that a copy be forwarded to Ms. Brooks as a token of appreciation for her service. And I've got this for her. And I want to, want to take just a second to thank all of commission and mayor for helping us keep this close to the vest and particularly Commissioner Wondell for lighting a fire under me last week to make sure we got it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I ask everybody to please continue to support the law director's office. It's very important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Out of all the years that I've worked for the sheriff's office and been associated with county government, there have been many times that I had to go to the law director's office about different numbers of business. And they were not always pleasant. I knew a lot of times we were going to be talking about some tragedy that had occurred in county government that we needed guidance from. There were times when I knew we were going to have a good conversation and we were going to be having discussions that were going to benefit the county as a whole and the residents. But regardless whether it was good or bad or sad or happy, the constant that was in that office was Nicole. And no matter what was going on, she was always able to set the tone right off the bat. And that always made the job for us a lot easier. And I'm sure for Jay and for Jamie, a lot easier. I have confidence that Jamie will certainly keep that department moving forward. But I would assume this is going to be a lot more difficult without Nicole being there. So I'm still mad at her.
Me too.
But we're understanding and we'll be praying for and hope that she continues to be blessed in everything she does. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Good speech.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just want, can't say much more than Commissioner Bowe did. He's hit everything. But I just want to say thank you, Nicole. Your professionalism and what you did for the office and for all of us up here will never be forgotten. I wish you well. I love you. Love your family. And gonna miss you. Thank you.
Oh, no.
Thank you, Nicole. I appreciate everything you've done for me in the short time that I've been on commission. Every time I've reached out, you've responded right back. You've got me the answers to the questions that I had. And I just really appreciate you working with me and especially on the opioid resolutions. You've worked really hard on that and I think I appreciate that. Okay, anyone else? All right. That is all that we have on the resolution proclamation and presentation portion of tonight's meeting. So we will stand in adjournment until 6:30.
Commissioner Bowe, you recognize?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Out of all the years that I've worked for the sheriff's office and been associated with county government, there have been many times that I had to go to the law director's office about different numbers of business. And they were not always pleasant. I knew a lot of times we were going to be talking about some tragedy that had occurred in county government that we needed guidance from. There were times when I knew we were going to have a good conversation and we were going to be having discussions that were going to benefit the county as a whole and the residents. But regardless whether it was good or bad or sad or happy, the constant that was in that office was Nicole. And no matter what was going on, she was always able to set the tone right off the bat. And that always made the job for us a lot easier. And I'm sure for Jay and for Jamie, a lot easier. I have confidence that Jamie will certainly keep that department moving forward. But I would assume this is going to be a lot more difficult without Nicole being there. So I'm still mad at her. But we're understanding and we'll be praying for and hope that she continues to be blessed in everything she does. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just want, can't say much more than Commissioner Bowe did. He's hit everything. But I just want to say thank you, Nicole. Your professionalism and what you did for the office and for all of us up here will never be forgotten. I wish you well. I love you. Love your family. And gonna miss you. Thank you.
Oh, no.
Thank you, Nicole. I appreciate everything you've done for me in the short time that I've been on commission. Every time I've reached out, you've responded right back. You've got me the answers to the questions that I had. And I just really appreciate you working with me and especially on the opioid resolutions. You've worked really hard on that and I think I appreciate that. Okay, anyone else? All right. That is all that we have on the resolution proclamation and presentation portion of tonight's meeting. So we will stand in adjournment
Good evening, everyone. Let's call the June 16th, 2025 County Commission Meeting to Order. We have, roll call's been made on the board. We have a quorum. First, what we'll do is ask for prayer, and that will be led by Commissioner Shane Vowell, and then Commissioner Foster will follow that up with the pledge. Commissioner?
Heavenly Father, we come to you again tonight to thank you for all your blessings, most of all for our salvation. We ask forgiveness for the sins that we commit against you daily, the times that we know we fail you. Please strengthen us not to fail, to always do what you would have us to do in every situation, each and every day. Lord, as we are here tonight, we ask for your wisdom, your guidance, your leadership, Lord, in making decisions that affect your people. We ask, Lord, that you remember our county as a whole, our state, our country. We ask you to remember the nation of Israel tonight. We ask, Lord, that you be with us as we conduct this business. Let it all be in your favor. All this we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, all. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now, we will move on to the Appearance of Citizens section of our agenda. This is a time where anyone in the audience can address us on items that are on or not on the agenda. Each of you that elect to address this will have three minutes to speak. Commissioner Foster will give you a 30-second warning when that time is coming up. It will be a hard cutoff at 30 seconds, so just apologize in advance if that seems to happen. Again, just laying the ground rules that we ask that there's no derogatory, inflammatory, or any vulgar language, inappropriate thing said, no direct attacks on anyone that's in the room or sitting up here. But at this time, I will open up the podium for anyone who would like to address the county. All right, seeing none, we will move on to the Appearances of Citizens. I mean, sorry, we just did that. I ain't doing that again. I'm kidding. Approval and correction of agendas. First, we will start with the Consent Agenda. Just for record-keeping, we will move, I talked to Dr. Per, we're going to move the Board of Education minutes, so we'll have the 6/12 and then the 7, whatever that date is, in the July. So you can strike that from your agenda. But outside of that, do we have anything else for the Consent Agenda? Is there a motion to approve that? All right, we have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Madam? What we can do is, we'll add it on the regular agenda, if you're okay with that. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I apologize to you, it's throwing me off here. I literally have 16 faces looking at me. They've updated the software. So it's, I feel it here, then I'm like, man, they really are looking at me, if y'all want to see this later. Michael, you might need a new picture. All right, we'll move on to the regular agenda. I sent an email out today asking to add the Library Board. We have, Commissioner Anderson's term is ending at the very end of June. So we'll need to fill that. I know we've done, in the last couple of meetings, we've had some commissioners now, I think they were both not contested, but I wanted to add that. And then, Mayor, I know that we had talked and you had sent an email out.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's several. So first, under the Budget Committee Report, would like to add an amendment from the Sheriff's Department for $42,500. This is coming as a last-minute addition because these are grant funds, and in order to be able to spend them by year-end, those were placed in your box today. And then also, emailed out Friday was a grant, another budget amendment related to that grant for SRO grant funds. This is for $36,000. That was emailed out, if we could add that to the agenda. And then also, I emailed out an amendment to the Broadband Ready Communities Grant, and I can talk about that during that section, and Law Director Brooks has approved that. Then also adding the MOUs for dispatch that are referenced under the Law Director's report. This is for Rocky Top Norris and E911. And then lastly, again, I apologize, these are kind of last-minute requests by the state, a TDEC Amendment for ORCA that allows us to utilize some unspent funds for a City of Oak Ridge project.
Okay. Commissioner McCamey, are you good with those being under their prospective reports instead of new business?
Both that and the elaborate.
Okay. And then, if the commission is okay with it, there's not a public, we can add 5B to Public Hearing Report and those resolutions. The, it would only be the one resolution, I think the first was a proclamation. Is that correct, Commissioner Allen? Okay. So the resolution for Ms. Brooks would be under 5B, and then I would add 5C, Library Board Appointment. Are you okay with that, Commissioner McCamey? And then the others, Mayor and Finance, we'll just add those under your prospective reports and not new business, if that's...
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, is there anything else? We have a motion and a second with the amended agenda. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so now we will move on to 5B, Public Hearing Report, Vice Chair Lady Vandergriff.
During the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, we had a, sorry, proclamation honoring Appalachian storyteller JD Phillips. I said it correctly this time. We also had a resolution honoring Nicole Brooks for her years of service with Anderson County, and that is all we had.
All right, we have a motion to approve the resolution for Ms. Brooks. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Capshaw, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Is that... All right. We'll move on to 5C, the Library Board Appointment that ends, as you know, a county commissioner shall, has to serve on the board. So that term for Commissioner Anderson ends June 30th, and also, you know, if there's others that are interested, then I would, Commissioner McCamey, you're recognized.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Anderson.
All right. We have Commissioner Anderson. And Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, but you get, was it two terms?
Yes, I was originally appointed as a regional board member in 2019, and then the state dissolved that board around 2022, so I got my first county appointment in 2022, and it's two, three-year terms for that.
Okay. I saw another, Commissioner Allen, you're recognized. I didn't hear you, sir. All right. Is there any other... Anybody else? All right. All right, we will, is there any way this body wants to handle this? Other than just... Okay. Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you.
Hold on a second. Let me go to Commissioner Beauchamp real quick. It was like the same time she has a motion.
Okay, no problem.
I'd like to make a motion since there's two applicants that we send this to Nomination Committee for their recommendation to forward back to full commission.
All right, so you're making a referral motion to nominating?
Yes.
When do you, when is the... We don't have one set, I'm assuming.
No, we could possibly do that on July 14th at 4:00, right before the legislative in operations.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp to refer to a nominating committee meeting. We have a second by Commissioner Palmer. Commissioner Anderson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll be, the Library Board is scheduled to meet July 10th, I believe, so they would not have a commission representative. If they meet, it might cause an issue for them to have a quorum.
July 10th, yourself?
Yes, so it would be, it would be good if we could vote on it tonight.
Okay. So we do have a motion to refer... All right. Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand that we have suspended the rules in the past couple months, I guess, for commissioners to be put on committees. Those were unique situations. Those were circumstances that the commissioners could not help, their work schedules changed, they were unable to complete their term. This was the expiration of a term, and the Library Board has had two members expire at the same time this month. They took the steps to place the first board member, but they didn't the second one, and I'm not really sure why we, they didn't take care of that this time. So nevertheless, my point is that we have rules and we have a process for appointments through the nominating committee, and I think that it should go back to the nominating committee, we should follow the process.
Okay.
Or, or, I'm sorry, or we need to have a serious conversation about dissolving the nominating committee and just having this full commission or operations or some other committee taking on that responsibility of making appointments to committees and boards. I'm good with whatever, I just, you know, I feel like we should follow our process. And I know that the librarians, I attended the last meeting, I know the librarians are neck-deep in summer reading.
This is kind of off the referral motion here.
Okay. I don't think they would care if we missed a meeting.
Commissioner Allen, is this about the referral motion?
Yes, it is.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. When I first came on commission, I was told...
This is not about the referral motion. What exactly you want to talk on the motion to refer? That's what we needed to be discussing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll give you a little bit more. My apologies, it sounded like a biography was coming.
I don't have a biography, Mr. Chairman. But it was my understanding when I first came on commission that we had a system in place, and that system was the subcommittee system. The senior members of this board would say, let's utilize our subcommittees to get things done, and that has been kind of like the rule here for the longest, and I think sometimes there should be some extenuating circumstances to suspend the rules. I don't think this is one of them. I think that we should abide by our process of going through our subcommittees or abolish them.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Sorry for cutting you off.
That's okay.
Madam? Okay, let me get Commissioner McCamey, and then we'll end with you, Mayor. Commissioner?
Do we have a rule against a member serving until their replacement? I know a lot of the committees, they serve until...
Yeah, I think this one's covered under the law, but I'm not sure how, with his term ending June 30th, I'm not sure how the statute would look at that, just to be honest with you. I know that Commissioner Anderson had reached out to me saying it needs to be filled, but I don't want to... You know, if his term's up, June 30th, what does that do to his votes at that committee? Okay. Well, right now, let's handle this referral. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Well, I was tracking with Commissioner McCamey. My understanding of the boards and commissions is that unless the member resigns or steps down, or, for instance, commission declared a vacancy, that a member continues to serve until reappointed.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's my understanding of how all the boards have worked in the past.
And I would think that's probably true. I would just be curious, since this is a board established by statute, does that still? But, all right, we have a referral motion to the nominating committee for this appointment, and then Mr. Brooks will let us know, and if something happens, we can always bring it back up. So, all in favor for, to refer this to nominating, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
No.
I believe the motion passes.
Board vote, Mr. Chairman.
It's too late to call for a board vote. We've already voted it down. Voted it.
You must hear better than me.
All right. We will move on to... Well, actually, before we do that, I know that Judge Spitzer is here to speak on, Mr. Brooks, I don't know if you want to segue this, just to allow Mr. Spitzer to speak real quick on what you had talked about.
If this commission is so inclined, part of my report includes a report that Judge Spitzer, I think, files annually, and he will always appear to answer any questions. And I promised him I would get him up as quickly as possible, and so if there's some way we can move it up the agenda, or at least that part of it, to let him go ahead and speak to the report, and then we can, it'll need to be spread on the minutes, but the report's there, and he's just going to elaborate on parts of it, I think.
Is there any objection to the judge speaking? Okay.
Good evening. I know y'all are super busy. I want to take up a second of your time. By statute, I'm required as the chair of the courthouse security meeting to share with you our progress every spring, kind of let you know how things are going. I do that by forwarding a report that we share with the AOC every year, and so that's been submitted to Law Director Brooks. And so that's been submitted to, uh, Law Director Brooks, and I'm sure he's probably already shared that with you. Um, the short version is, we've made a lot of progress in the last year or two. We got about $77,000 worth of grant money from the AOC. We made substantial security upgrades to some access points in general sessions in Oak Ridge, improved some camera systems. We up armored the rest of the benches and the, um, the clerk spaces in the courtrooms. And in fact, your dais should be fully armored now with ballistic material. Initially, just the center section was done, but the rest of it needed to be finished. Um, years ago in 2018, they put out statewide security requirements. And, um, counties have struggled to come into compliance, and it's been a big push within, within the legislature and the AOC to try to bring every county across the state up to those 2018 security standards. What we did when we put ballistic material for the judges' benches originally back years ago is they just did the judges' benches. And we were actually supposed to also include the clerk spaces, for example, because we want to keep them safe as well. So we had to figure out that that was a hole in what we had done years ago and go back and fix all of that. So now I'm happy to say Anderson County is fully in compliance. We did that entirely with grant funds. And, um, I also wanted to make a point of saying thank you. First of all, I, I make a point of coming here personally to give you, um, to pay the courtesy of saying, you know, here's where we are, here's what we're doing, here's the progress we're making, and to be available to answer any questions. Um, also, I wanted to make a point of saying thank you for the technology upgrades that you, that just went in in my courtroom last week. Um, we were scrambling today to get all the audio worked out, and we weren't quite able to avoid having to transport the whole 88 inmates to my courtroom today. Um, we were texting frantically at 5:30 this morning, trying to get all that to work. And I was with the installers till almost seven o'clock last Friday evening, trying to make sure all the equipment was properly installed. But they were having some communication problems with Sessions Court, um, on the new system. We've got most of those kinks worked out. I feel confident the next time we'll be able to maybe transport as few as half of the normal number of inmates, which will be not only a cost savings, a manpower savings, but also a tremendous safety savings when you're just bringing that many people into a courthouse at one time. So thank you. I made a point of giving y'all a shout out this morning in open court and saying how much I appreciated County Commission doing that for us. And I'm looking forward to Chancery Court getting the same upgrades before the end of the year. Thank you all.
Any questions for the judge? Uh, Commissioner Val, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing the judge alluded to, and I know he's very in tune with this, but those of you who have never been up here on a Monday morning, I would love to invite you to come by and see the amount of business, the amount of work, the amount of traffic that is done in this building by our judges, our clerks, our law enforcement, uh, everybody. I mean, it, it's, it's amazing to sit back and watch the amount of work that's done here. But if you've never seen that, especially on Monday mornings, uh, I would encourage you to come by, at least experience it one time.
Is that a motion to reinstate day meetings?
Ah, good idea. You're here anyway.
Thank you. Just don't get stuck in the Sally Port elevator on your way up.
That'd be the next thing we'll have to work. All right, thank you, Judge.
Appreciate you.
All right, County Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first item on the agenda is I'm requesting a motion to confirm the appointment of Anthony Braden to the E-911 board to fill the unexpired term of Jim Shutterly, who stepped away for, uh, his other job commitments. And then the reappointment of Ann Jordan to the E-911 board.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Vow, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next, um, I'm requesting a motion to confirm the appointment of Dr. Thomas Myers to fill the vacancy for the position of dental representative on the Anderson County Board of Health. This comes by recommendation of the Anderson County Board of Health.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Palmer. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next item is, um, we approved a five-year contract with East Tennessee Football Club for use of the soccer fields. The terms and conditions of the agreement, however, require annual approval, even though the five-year was approved, annual approval by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners. So I included in your package the original contract and then the renewal sheet from purchasing and requesting a motion to approve. I also included one of the pictures in there from the girls' team, uh, bringing home a, a championship. They've got a lot of activity there. Uh, in May, they had a families and players in the season event, had over 130 people there. And a special shout out of thanks to Commissioner Vow and, um, the team sheriff and the trustees for keeping it mowed. These folks have done a great job managing the fields and have put a lot of investment into fertilizing. And as Commissioner Vow knows, it's requiring a lot of mowing, extra mowing, but, um, it's, they're doing a lot of work there, painting and doing things. So it's, it's working well.
Good. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Capshaw. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is I did include, just per, um, our request, the monthly 2025 shelter statistics. Then the next item I have that was added to the agenda under new business is the broadband amendment. I included in the email the full original grant contract, summarizing the changes that this amendment calls for. Um, it changes attachment A and changes the category from education and workforce development to digital skills training, which is what we actually applied for. And then it also changes attachment D, which is beginning the budget, uh, to reflect the date of execution, which was October 14th, 2024, from June 21st, 2024. And the law director has approved this amendment.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners and Mr. Chairman. The next are the MOUs. These are, um, essentially a renewal. However, um, because of costs and adding additional staff, the amounts were updated. Uh, the law director did work with the Sheriff's Department on drafting these and, and fine tuning them. Um, it's a MOU for the Emergency Communications District, the City of Rocky Top, and the City of Norris.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Any discussion on this motion? All right, and the, Commissioner Allen, is this for all the MOUs?
Yes, at the whole.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next is, um, an amendment to the TDEC Division of Remediation Grant. This particular grant, Mr. Chairman, um, makes funding available for the Oak Ridge Reservation Community Alliance. Uh, the amendment is required because we're able to keep some unexpended funds from 2024. The City of Oak Ridge will be using this for particular projects, um, for the city in conjunction with the ORCA Reservation Community Alliance. So I'm requesting a motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Capshaw, seconded by Commissioner Beauchamp. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Uh, Finance Deputy Director Randy. Good to have you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Going to start with the cash and fund balance report. Uh, general fund restricted funds balance of $1,866,850. Committed funds of $211,804. Assigned funds of $3,566,293. Unassigned fund balance of $10,456,101. Giving a total fund balance of $16,101,048 and a cash balance of $23,728,407. General Purpose School Fund, committed fund balance of $8,227,641. Total fund balance, same amount, $8,227,641 and a cash balance of $13,406,442. If you look at our cash trends, we're 7.2% up from last year on cash collections or cash fund balance rather. Any questions about the fund balance report? Okay, if not, moving on to the local auction sales tax report. For the month of April, our Anderson County collections are $553,491. The county as a whole, including all municipalities, is $4,638,498. And that is up 4.4% over the same month last year. So we're on a good trend there. Any questions on the local auction sales tax report? Okay. Moving on to the ARP Projects Report. We have nine projects yet to be completed. And, uh, since the last meeting, I think we spent approximately $175,000 of the outstanding money. We do have $226,000 in interest earned. And the next report is related to our grant activity overall. That has not changed since last month. So that's $19,67,927 of grant activity. Okay. Moving on to Group Three, the purchasing contracts. We had nine contracts for approval, and we've also had one surplus donation request for library, uh, law library books for Loudoun County. They lost some books in a fire, and we, uh, have duplicates that we can donate. So seeking approval as a group, we're happy to discuss.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, all of them, sir? Okay. Uh, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, please go to the board and vote. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving to Group Four appropriations for the school. These do require commission approval by a board vote. There are six appropriation amendments in that group. Happy to discuss individually or approve as a group.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, please go to the board and vote. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. In Group Five, we have three transfers for the school. Those also require, uh, commission approval by board vote.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, please go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Okay. Group Six, those are non-school appropriations that require commission approval by vote, by board vote. There are seven items in that section.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Varan. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Group Seven appropriations from general fund unassigned fund balance. There's one item there.
All right. Uh, motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Uh, motion carries.
Okay, Group Eight are transfers, non-school, also requiring commission approval by board vote. There are nine items in that group.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Anthony? Are you good? Motion carries.
Okay. Group Nine miscellaneous, some of these require commission vote, uh, some don't. So moving on to the action items that do, the Health Department roof, that's item C2 on your list. That is for $250,000 to come from the Capital Projects Fund to repair or replace the roof on the Health Department.
Was that combined with the sheriff's, I mean, the jail roof? Did we do that separate at committee?
So what we're doing, Mr. Chairman, is we're going to bid. We, um, engaged roof design works to inspect both the Health Department and the jail. Then they did the designs for the bid. We had the pre-bid, uh, meeting on site. We had a very, very robust turnout, um, a page and a half of vendors showed up. So the, this particular funding is, we have a, because of the smaller nature of replacement on the Health Department, we have a better estimate of the amount. The jail, we're going to wait and see what comes in.
Okay, very well. That's a good turnout. Uh, we do have a motion in a second. Commissioner Foster, you're recognized.
So the 200,000 dollars is said for repair or replace, is that?
It's, it's to replace. It is a new roof, yes, yeah.
Yep.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp, seconded by Commissioner Varan to replace the roof using the capital fund code. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Okay. In Group Nine, uh, item D are the tech upgrades to the Chancery Court. Uh, the amount of that is $24,830,99.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Beauchamp. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote. Motion carries.
Okay. Item E in Group Nine is, uh, the year-end rollover of Budget Code 207, which is medical insurance liability code. The Board of Trustees approved the rollover. We've done that in years past, where if there's money left over in that 207 code, we'll roll it forward to the new year to cover any increase in health costs, which we've had this year. So that, that amount is $233,000. The other part of that, too, is if a fund does not have enough or have anything in their 207 code, part of that request was to take 5% of their fund balance and fund it with that.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Okay. And the last item in Group Nine is item F, and there were two budget amendments that were new business at the Budget Committee meeting. One was for, uh, the Drug Court due to her retirement, and the other one is from the Sheriff's Office. And I don't remember the details of that one, so I'm going to look that one up. Give me just a second, please. Captain Owens, if you're still here, you may, can speak to that.
Help me out. Yeah, certainly.
Uh, so there's two transfers?
No, this isn't the SRO. This was, uh, another amendment during the regular budget meeting.
Was this the insurance recovery?
Yes, thank you.
Going back to?
Yes.
Vehicle maintenance?
Yes, yes, it was. Thank you. Thank you.
Call Captain, Chief Sharp, he's on vacation.
He would love to hear from you.
Sorry about that screw up there. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp, seconded by Commissioner Allen. And that's, as a group, right? Yes. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Okay. And finally, in group ten, are the two items that were discussed earlier, those are related to the School Resource Officer Grant. And for that grant, any money that we don't spend, we do send back. So there were two budget amendment requests for that that were covered earlier, but I can, I'll cover them again. Thirty-six thousand for vehicle and equipment, ten thousand for nine laptops, and thirty-two thousand, five hundred for seven radios. So that's a total of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred that otherwise we would be sending back to the state.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes the finance and purchasing report.
All right. Commissioner Palmer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Randy, I understand you're gonna be leaving us soon.
Yes, I am.
I am going to miss you tremendously.
Well, thank you very much.
I think maybe I speak for all of us. Thank you for all that you've done, and thank you particularly for putting up with me and answering all my questions. I know I probably drove you crazy. Y'all hush.
No, I appreciate it.
I wish you well in, in all your endeavors, and don't be a stranger, please.
Seven eleven is the last day. Yep. But I appreciate it. I've enjoyed it. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Randy.
All right. Director of Schools, Dr. Parrott?
As you know, it's summer, so I don't have a report, and I'll take any questions. We do have one thing about the nuclear. There is a meeting next, this Friday and next Friday, working on a plan with all of them at the nuclear about putting a workforce development plan together. So we're working with that, meeting at E-Tech on, for two weeks to build a plan for that. So got that on the board, so.
That's awesome.
I also wanna say condolences to you and your family for your mom.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that.
Any questions for Dr. Parrott? Commissioner Varren?
Yes, Dr. Parrott. We, we all know that we're all constrained by budgets and time and things like this that you have going on and everything like that. But, you know, we had some poor reports on schools this spring that you sent out to us and everything like that. And I think we should try to move the schools to as best we can ever get them, you know? Not so much as just keeping the same old going from year to year with what we got.
I agree one hundred percent.
But what we need to bring all the schools up to a top level, you know, what would that cost? What, what would be the plan to get there so that we can try to work for that? I mean, you know, if we've gotta go back to the legislature and ask them for more money, then I'm willing to do that. You know, that sort of thing, because school's so important. And whenever you have a school that's not up to par, you're failing everybody.
Yep, I agree one hundred percent. I agree one hundred percent. And I think we had a, we have a plan. We had a plan last year when we saw some of our scores that didn't make that, and we replaced some people and did some things and really, really honed in on curriculum and getting the right people on the bus. So I think y'all will be surprised when the scores come out this year. And, and it is true, anytime, you know, I send you all a report and you'll get a chance, you can look at it sometime about, you know, really, the, the hard thing is Anderson County government, you fund three school systems. You fund Clinton City, Oak Ridge, and Anderson County schools. And when you look at it, I think Oak Ridge puts in about an extra twenty million dollars for their school system that we run the same school system on. So it's kinda hard when you're doing that. Clinton City puts in quite a bit with them, too. But for what we do, I think we do a pretty good job. But we always improve. I'm never satisfied if, if one student fails, I'm never satisfied with that. So we're gonna work. We've got some new people coming into central office that will, I think, put some new light on things. So thank you for that.
All right. Commissioner Van De Grae.
Dr. Parrott, I just wanted to thank you for, and your staff and your teachers, for the food distribution on Fridays. I just swung by there, just in my, my vehicle, and looked like it was going really well. I watched the lives that they had and the social media presence. They're really getting the message out there that there's food available. And so, so please thank them for the, for the job that they're doing.
Now, they're doing amazing job. Rayann Owens and her staff have done a fantastic job on that. It, it, I think it's over fifteen hundred, two thousand meals last week. And, I mean, it's pretty good, a gallon of milk for everybody. And if you're under the age of eighteen, come and get it. We got two more, got two more Fridays, so thank you for that. And I, and I think that's one thing that, and I won't belabor it, 'cause I know we're very busy, is Anderson County, I take from my predecessor, Larry Foster, when he talked about the whole child. And you have to educate the whole child. And it's not, it is about reading, writing, and arithmetic, but it's about if they're hungry, it's about if they need, you know, we spend probably two million dollars a year now on social workers and, and, and things like that, and counselors and people, just to make, mental health's a big deal anymore. And so you can't just, you have to focus on everything. So when you spread that money around, it begin, it, it gets real thin. But I think our, our staff and teachers and everybody, they've done a tremendous job, and, and they really make every day count for Anderson County. Thank you for that.
All right. Commissioner Isbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Parrott? Last month, we had the opportunity to go to the Career and Technical Center and, and take a tour through there, and we had a commissioner and the mayor that got to wreck the excavator.
She didn't wreck it, did she?
Well, they did it on purpose, so she'd fill it. I can tell you, it really works. And this Career and Technical Program that we have over there, just for the simulator, we have over two hundred students that signed up.
Yes.
For that. Now, we're talking about, these are salaries coming out of high school, it's gonna be in six figures by knowing how to run this equipment. I think it's pretty phenomenal. But to have, I think it was two hundred and twenty-four students signed up?
Yes.
For one machine? So, and then, of course, they got their welding there that, and, and you're not actually welding, but it's all, and I watched that. I mean, it's, it's great technology if anybody gets the opportunity to go and see that.
Yeah, we're hoping.
The more of those we can get, I think the better we are.
Yeah, I think we're trying to get another one of those for next year. And, and you know, that was the thing, when I talked to them people that, with all the people in Oak Ridge, they said in the next five to ten years, they're gonna need six hundred heavy equipment operators just to do that. And I mean, you know, it, and I think this is what this, when you talk about nuclear and everything, it, it's from, from that, even if we can get those, you know, 'cause right now, if you look at the report, about twenty-four percent of our kids go right into the workforce, twenty-four percent go into, into a TCAD, and then the rest go to four and two-year colleges. But I think what we wanna do is, if you look, we don't want that, we don't want that gap between when they graduate and when they get that job where they can build that family. And so we want them to have, you know, the state passed a law that says, we wanna teach them that here's what you do is if you want to be one hundred percent, if you do these four things, you're not gonna be in poverty. And, and I think that when you look at it, if you graduate high school, you get a skill or a college degree, then you get married, then you have kids, you will not be in poverty. And we wanna make sure that's kinda the trail that they get that on. And I think if we can do that, is, it's amazing what they can do, because our kids are, they're brilliant kids out there. And we wanna make sure that every one of them has that opportunity.
Oh, and the students that they had there, they were, again, they were phenomenal, because they were so interested in what they were doing.
And it helps, you know, we, we run out of space up there, but it helps. We're building the new CTE Center at Clinton High School and hope it's gonna be ready by August first. If not, we're gonna stack them in at ACCTC till it's open, so.
Great.
All right, Commissioner Vow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand about the grades of each school district that come out. I understand how those grades are determined, and I understand who determines those grades. I wish there was a grade that came out by the state on how a school helps raise a child. And how a community becomes part of a school, and the school becomes part of a community, and the life skills that are taught by the teachers, not just reading, writing, and arithmetic.
Yes, it's that whole child.
But how to live and how to succeed. So I'll go on record in saying, when the state starts trying to find a way to grade on those categories, I'll be more than happy to pay a little bit more attention to that report.
I understand that.
In the meantime, thank you for what you do. I think we should all try to strive to improve the education of our children.
Yes.
I don't think anybody would, would disagree with that at all. But speaking from a Bresel graduate myself, I have a nephew who's a doctor that came through Bresel, one that's a P.A. that came through Bresel, and I could continue to name off successful people. Commissioner Isbell and I spent a lot of time at Bresel Elementary, Lake City Elementary and the middle school, and I see success stories there every day.
Yes.
So I appreciate what the school department does for it.
I think when you look at our community engagement, it, it is, it is, it is amazing. When you have a small school and you do a, a, a family night, and you'll have, if you've got a hundred kids there, and you'll have three hundred, if you have three hundred kids show, people show up, and they show up and they do it. And, and I know you all get a lot of things that you all ask, but the people, the unson heroes, too, are these small businesses in our area, because they wear them out, but you know what? When they go in there and they ask, that cheerleading coach asks for fifty dollars, they give them fifty dollars. Or they ask for five hundred dollars, they do that. And you have some people that, when you ask for a hundred thousand dollars, they give that. So I mean, it, it proves it takes everybody working together. And listen, I, I'm, I'm never the smartest person in the room, and I make mistakes, but we're gonna always strive to be the best.
I need to mention my niece who's at Bresel, went there, and she's a schoolteacher now, too. She'd get mad at me if I didn't, so.
There you go, there you go. Thank you all.
All right. Dr. Parrott, have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you all. Have a great day.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes. Okay, as far as going through the Law Director's report, you can see the various contracts, and there's been several more that we've done that are not on the report, and they'll be on the report next month. I think we're pretty well caught up with the requests that have been sent to us. Moving to the bottom of page two, I would highlight under liens, 208 Lake City Highway. The lien was recorded, and we actually generated revenue for the county out of it because the property sold. Our lien was of record, and they paid us five thousand dollars in exchange for a release of the lien. So that has been taken care of, and that release has been filed. Over to the litigation updates, you can see them there with respect to number, if I can just run through it real quick. Number one, that motion hearing is to test the sufficiency of our pleadings in that case, and I would have more to say about that in an executive session. The Schubert case versus Terry Frank is, is a kinda companion Webster. No developments since the filing of the motion to dismiss and the response. A date has not been set. Zayo is, it's number one on the runway. That's the one we need to discuss tonight. Mara, nothing has developed since the report. Shane Dietl in the defense of that case for Deputy Kirk has been assigned to Alec Michael in Knoxville, so the insurance has taken the defense of that. And, so essentially, right now, we, we're monitoring eight cases, fourth which my office is over, is involved in, and fourth which insurance defense counsel is handling. You have, you'll see on there, I have requested an executive session, and that is to discuss the Zayo matter, which has a hearing coming up, not Tuesday, as we had indicated in the report, but it's gonna be Wednesday at 1:00 P.M. instead of Tuesday.
Commissioner, are you okay with moving that after our committee reports instead of now? So we can, all right. Commissioner Foster?
I have one last question before we go into executive session at the end, but this is about the Zayo case, not, but the insurance, I know that was brought up, I brought that up in operations. I know you're still looking into that. They've denied our coverage, and I have issues with that. And looking at it reasons that they deny coverage, I, I think that's, I think that's serious something we need to look at from coverage-wise going forward with our insurance carriers.
That is, because we've had that discussion, and it's still, the discussion is still going on with Paul Mangram. I don't have an outcome of that yet.
Just want that on the record. All right. Are you good, Mr. Brooks, until we go to?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, sir. Operations, Chairman Isbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Wondell made a motion to approve sending a letter asking, well, let's see, let me go back to the first. Commissioner Foster made a motion to allow the mayor to pursue making Militia Hill for Anderson a state park historic site through the State Equalization Board. Also, the Law Director drafted a letter to the board, sent by Commissioner Wondell. Motion passed unanimously, forward to full commission for approval.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner McCamey.
And I wanna clarify on that motion, the part of that was having the mayor look at the State Equalization Board on, you know, taking the taxes away, not just looking at State Park. So that was, that was my motion from operations, just wanted that to be the motion from here, too. I'm okay with State Park, park, but I want the, the one section to be in there about the state equalization. I think the mayor understood that, I just wanted that.
Yeah, that's correct.
Be clear. Thank you.
Commissioner Caddish, hold on.
I just had a quick question. Is, I was gonna spell, is that correct, M.I.? For Militia Hill? M.I.?
Don't work on it, doesn't?
No, I just.
Is it?
M.I.
M.I.
Yeah. Just to clarify. I just wanted to make that correct. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on that motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under Law Director's report, Commissioner Wondell made a motion to approve sending a letter asking TVA to refrain from closing the Claxton Kids Palace Recreation Area prior to November first, 2025, or the playground equipment is relocated to a new site, whichever comes first, seconded by Commissioner Varren. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Varren. Is there any discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
An item of interest, and this would be for Chairman White on the Highway Department, too. We talked about flashing signs for Carroll Hall Road and Highway 116. Commissioner McCamey made a motion to refer to the Highway Committee to add no-turn signs at the entrance, seconded by Commissioner Varren. Motion passed unanimously. We had a lot of good, healthy discussion about that, and I think everybody that travels 25W would like to see something. So if Commissioner White will agree to that, or Chairman White.
We've got it on the agenda already.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. One other thing is I saw Dr. Sexton last Thursday in Walmart parking lot. He wanted to commend all of County Commission, the mayor, for the job that they're doing. He's very impressed the way things were being handled. So I said, I'll pass it along.
Good endorsement.
Thank you.
All right.
That concludes the Operations Committee report.
Yes, sir. Fire Commission, Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The report before you is from May. Don't have the minutes from June yet. I guess we'll roll those to next month. There's nothing really in there. I know Commissioner Anderson joined the Fire Commission, and he kinda ran the meeting. I was out of the meeting. Commissioner Anderson, you got anything you wanna add?
Not really. The only thing, kind of the, the main topic of their discussion.
Not really. The, the only thing, uh, kind of the, the main topic of their discussion was just, uh, hoping commission will, will do something about funding capital outlay, uh, going forward, you know, on an annual basis for, for all, all 11 departments. But I know we're not gonna take up the budget tonight, but that was, that was kind of what the gist of their conversation was.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm getting the same feedback from, uh, municipalities, Auburn Springs, Rocky Top for sure. Uh, so appreciate that the budget committee would look into that. I know the budget's tight, but, uh, fire commission would appreciate that. Um, and then our good friend, Commissioner Bochamp, who resigned, I, I just wanna, I wanted to read the, uh, appreciation proclamation they put together, uh, but she got it delivered to her box, so maybe you'll bring it back, bring it back to me, and I'll read it next meeting. Yeah, yeah. So, thank you for what you did. Uh, they were all very appreciative of what you've done for us, so thank you. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I'll just remind, um, I think everybody should have had the letter by now, but special call meeting for the budget on Monday at 5:30 in this room. We wanted to make sure that Director Holbrook was present when passing and, just, um, so he could answer any questions. So, just a, just a reminder, uh, week from today at 5:30. Is there any announcements before we entertain a motion to go into executive session? All right. Uh, is there a motion to? All right, what we're gonna do? I knew that was coming. I don't know if that'll be part of the motion, so what we'll do is take a, a quick, uh, can we do five? Five-minute, uh, break, uh, before we go entertain a motion for executive session.
All right.
Is there a motion to?
Yeah, we're on, we're live. Yeah. Thank you though. Yeah.
I mean, I'm interested, but not that.
Oh, you're good. You got a parade on, or? That's fine. I was wondering. It's pretty close. Seconded by Commissioner, by Commissioner Yeager. Any debate on this? Sitting in all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries. We are now in executive session, which, are we good, Andy? Alright. Nobody in the...
All right. Do we have entertain a motion to...
Motion to...
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp, seconded by Commissioner Foster. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So that is, that concludes... Is there any other items to come before... About another last-minute announcements that you all thought of?
If I may, I only want to add the library board. I would say I voted in favor of going to, of moving this to the nominating committee. I would like for it to reconsider that. I would like for this board tonight to fill that position. How do I make that? What kind of motion do I need to make?
So the appropriate motion would be a motion to reconsider the renewal.
I'd like to make a motion that we reconsider.
Okay. So we have a motion to reconsider the renewal, the written renewal. Sorry. I was wondering why that didn't sound right. The referral to nominating, and we have a second by Commissioner Aaron, correct?
Does it need to be seconded by someone who voted...
No, just the motion.
Yeah, the motion maker has to be on the winning, but yeah. Okay. All right. So is there any discussion on the motion to reconsider by Commissioner White? All right, seeing none, we've asked for, we have a roll call vote, I mean, board vote, if you could bring up. And this is to reconsider the renewal motion.
So no, we don't want to reconsider at all?
Yes, if... Did I say renewal again? My apologies. Motion, yeah. Motion to reconsider the referral to nominating. A yes vote says yes, you do want us to go back to that and reconsider it. A no means that you want to move forward with how we conducted business earlier. So please go to the board and vote. Commissioner Mondale is not present. Motion to reconsider failed. All right. Heck, I just hit something. I don't know what I did. All right. So, and I did ask Mr. Brooks during the break, his opinion is that Commissioner Anderson still would serve, would still be an active member of the library board until he is either reappointed and confirmed next month, or something else happens.
And I looked at the, and we talked about this, I looked at the statute, which is 10-3-103, and all it talks about is the length of the term, and that they can serve two terms. It doesn't say drop dead after the end of three years, and most...
That'd been an interesting statute.
Most board members will, or elected officials, or anybody in that, you know, that kind of position, will serve until their successor is appointed, elected, whatever, and sworn in. So I feel like we're on...
So you're comfortable with him going to the meeting and to conduct the business as he has been? All right. All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Second? Yep. We send adjourn.